Very good, we'll open up, welcome tonight to the translated version of the Corporation of the City of Clarence and Rockland's regular meeting of council. You know, so things are getting underway folks in just a few seconds. And the mayor will be calling an official start to the meeting. Very good. In the meantime, we just ask you to stay tuned as we will begin momentarily. Very good. I believe Mr. Jean-Marc Lallon, Mr. Mayor, has received the Order of Canada. That's something that is certainly worthwhile to underline, is certainly worthwhile to celebrate. Congratulations, Mr. Lallon, for this exceptional achievement. Anything else? That's fine then, let's continue on now. Let's go on now to the question period. Any questions or comments to be made? Well, fine, well that was short and sweet. Council members' items. Go ahead, Councilor Lallon. Whereas, the nominations for the International Ploughing Match, the 2019 International Ploughing Match need to be forwarded as of the 19th of April 2016. Be it resolved that Town Council mandate Jean-Marc Lallon to undertake the necessary steps to prepare a report recommending the nomination of the City of Clarence and Rockland to host the International Ploughing Match in 1919. Or should I say in 2019. Be it also resolved that Town Council authorizes Jean-Marc Lallon to take the necessary steps to set up an organizational committee to oversee the event. Seconded by? Yes? Counselor by, seconded by Counselor Grimah. Any questions or comments? Counselor Sima? I'd just like to ask the following. This ploughing match, Mr. Mayor, do we have an idea as to how much it's going to cost us? Look, I attended one ploughing match in Hoxbury East. I'd just like to know finally. I understand that this event gives rise to economic windfalls, or considerable economic windfall. This being considered though, this being stated, how much would it cost us to host this event? Well, let me tell you that if ever it costs us any money, it would be services offered in kind. You know, for example, if we need trucks to have attendees get to the state, to the site, should I say, we supply those. The organization is overseen by the Ontario Ploughing, or Ploughman Association. Hydro insulation was overseen by Ontario Hydro, or is overseen by Ontario Hydro, at no cost to the City of Clarence and Rockland. What we need are volunteers and before we take a decision, we need to have to come up with a 1,000-acre farm property. It doesn't have to be a 1,000 full acre, it could be a seven and then a 300-acre stretch. And the farmer is compensated for the use of his property. We need at least 500 volunteers, as mentioned at the last meeting, Mr. Mayor. We'd have to consult the Farmers Union, the Frank Ontario Farmers Union. They had a meeting, I met with them about two weeks ago. And about two weeks ago, the next day, they asked me to relay to the Town Council that they were completely in agreement with helping us to organize the event. Well, have you come up with an agricultural piece of property? Well, we've taken a look at a lot of farmland, but I did not dare to approach anyone before having the authorization of council. You'd mentioned that there were two farm lots on St. Boscet. I approached the two individuals, both said no. Both said no, the two owners. There might be another one along Highway 17. We also have to conclude that if we're not interested in having it, North Glengarry would certainly host it in our stead. All I'm asking is to have, to be given the opportunity to undertake the steps necessary to set up this event. If we don't have the committee and we don't have the 1,000 acres necessary, then we can't get into this. Well, what I'm looking at, that scares me the most, I take a look at, I took a look at the Navan Ploughing Match. Three days of rain, $800,000 expenditures. Now, you know, some of your friends went up to Toronto to clean up their, to clean the washroom facilities, because the committee could not pay the washroom facilities. Luckily, the Pope visited at that time, they needed volunteers, they cleaned up the washroom facilities there that had been lent out to Navan. Also, there's Finch. Township, they put in $675,000 for IPMs. Some of those items are earmarked for infrastructure, I know that, I know that. But they had to come up with $675,000 from their budget to go ahead with this. Now, if I take a look at the organization required to set up this thing, we need to oversee the organizational aspect of this event. Here at Town Hall, we don't have sufficient employees. A sufficient amount of employees, you see? We might run the risk of winding up in the midst of a nightmare. Of course, if we incur any rain, Hoxbury East, when they hosted the International Ploughing Match one or two years ago, they, they were greatly concerned. Well, you see, what's most important is to come up with agricultural property. We might be able to start from there and go on, but we have nothing at all. I believe that if we are to vote on a resolution at this point in time, we are actually putting the horse before the cart, because it might exert pressure upon individual citizens' shoulders, should I say, by compelling township of getting involved in this before getting anything tangible offered to us. All I know is that agricultural land that is loaned out for this type of event is damaged, is subject to great damage, because there's a lot of compaction that's going during the course of, that's manifested during the course of this event. It seems to me that we're renting out at $275 per acre. I heard $75. Well, maybe a suggestion. Maybe it might, please, Mr. Lallon, maybe we might modify this resolution stipulating that we authorize, Mr. Lallon, to set up a communication network to come up with agricultural property and then come back to council with a resolution to this effect. Why do we need a resolution to this effect? Well, Mr. Mayor, let me just address a few points. In Navan, this event was held in Navan a few days prior to the 9/11 disaster and they had a few days of rain afterwards. This all occurred around the 9/11 unfortunate set of circumstances. Well, this being said, this being said, there was a Frank Kelly project that was set up at that time to oversee the economics of this particular ploughing match. Now, you're stating that it cost Finch, or the United Counties of Prescott Russell, the township of Finch? They had an $850,000 profit. Well, it's not a profit if you're called upon to spend $875,000 worth of, $875,000 for organization and clearing up the damage. Hoxbury East, I was told, $470,000 worth of benefits, of economic benefits. Yes, but the United Counties of Prescott Russell also incurred quite a loss. The Economic Development Committee worked one year prior to the inception of this event to make sure that this event, when it was being held, would be held smoothly. But look, before we go into any further discussions, if we don't come up with farm property, it doesn't amount to anything, does it? Let me tell you, Mr. Cauch and Mr. Kaelin, both of those guys are in disagreement. Mr. Cauch doesn't want to have anything to do with this. They're the two biggest farmland owners in that area, around the St. Boscet area. And if they're not in agreement, well, that's fine. You know, one has to think that the only thing that you'll be able to either plant the day, the year after that would be either wheat or hay. Now, look, you're talking about agricultural property. Mr. Kaelin is now involved in cash cropping and in soya. Now, look, if such an event is held on his property, he's only held to hay and the next year, and wheat. Well, I have nothing against farmers and ploughing matches, I support them fully and I appreciate what they're doing. And the type of work also, the hard work that they do day in and day out, week in and week out, I know that. But I'm hard pressed to explain to the population at large, to ratepayers, that we run the risk, we run the risk of incurring $675,000 or $800,000 deficit by supporting an event and by having the rest of the population support us and supporting that potentially risky event. I'm trying to support this, I'm trying to balance this in my mind and I cannot. Well, Mr. Lallon, well, if Counselor Lallon is ready to meet people to obtain a sizable portion of land that might host this, well, that's fine. If not, well, the matter will be kept right here and now. Yes, we need an answer prior to the next meeting. Well, look, if you need a motion to have Mr. Lallon solicit these people to obtain property, that's fine. Well, I don't think we need a motion. After all, you're only going to consult with them. Well, you're, well, if you're authorizing me to come up with appropriate farmland, well, of course, I'll be meeting with them. As things stand right now, we don't have farmland. I was told that because it is located on Highway 17, about 30 kilometers east of Ottawa, we might draw in between 90,000 to 100,000 people. Well, does this mean that Mr. Lallon wishes to defer this bit of resolution? Well, as far as I'm concerned, we have to come up with information before taking a decision. Mr. Lallon will come up with, will try to come up with 1,000-acre farm property. If he can't come up with that, well, that's fine, that's the end of it. Well, if there is 1,000-acre property available, sir, are you ready to assume the risk involved? Well, I don't think we're we're at that point yet to, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. If there's no serious interest, there's no great interest behind the property, once we've obtained this piece of farmland, well, we'll see then, if, we'll gauge it then. Well, look, I'm afraid of what might happen, you know. I've been, I'm involved in farming, there's another one in attendance here tonight that's also involved in farming, and we don't know when we'll encounter either good or bad weather at any, at any time during a given summer or wherever. Well, if we defer the resolution until we come up with the piece of land, couldn't we do that? Well, in fact, if you don't come up with a pinpointed delay or pinpointed deadline, I can defer it until such time as a piece of property is come up with. Well, why don't we just do that then? We'll just defer the resolution. Just wait until then, I have occasion to contact and meet individuals. You certainly won't prevent me from contacting or soliciting potential individuals. No, no, of course not, of course not. No, no, we're just asking you to take a look at the property, the potential properties that are involved. How are you doing in your vacation, Mrs. Wallette? All right, let's go on now. So we'll defer it. I need someone to move that we defer this motion. Moved and seconded, seconded by Counselor Grimah, all those in favor? Thank you. Consent items. We talk about, are we dealing with withdrawing some of those consent items? I'd like to take away 10.8 to rephrase it, and I have also a question with regards to item 10.9. Fine then. Others that we might address? Do I have someone to read this, Mrs. Sima? All items listed in this section of the agenda will be subject to approval under one non-debatable, non-amenable motion. Now, 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. A, 2000, the minutes of the 2016 Budget Committee of the Whole meeting of November 24, 2015. B, 2016 Budget Committee of the Whole meeting of November 25, 2015. C, 2016 Budget Committee of the Whole meeting of December 1, 2015. D, 2016 Budget Committee of the Whole meeting of December 2, 2015. E, 2016 Budget Committee of the Whole meeting of December 3, 2015. F, minutes of the regular meeting of January 25, 2016. 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. The Planning Committee of January 13, 2016. B, Public Transit Advisory Committee of November 19, 2015. C, minutes of the Public Library Board of January 19, 2016. 10.3, the following items as recommended by the Committee of the Whole. A, 2016 trucking services rates and the Conlon Street right-of-way widening. 10.4, adoption of the salaries paid from January 3, 2016 to January 30, 2016 in the gross amount of $745,995.68 and net amount of $522,294.31. 10.5, to support the Optimist Clarence Creek Club and the organization of their family's hockey tournament. 10.7, the hiring of a manager of recreational and municipal facilities. 10.10, the hiring of a full-time temporary operator laborer for infrastructure and planning department. Seconded by Counselor Sima, any questions? All right, these are consent items, I'm sorry. I was just making sure that everybody was well awake. All right, all those in favor, carry. Yes, we've removed item 10.8, please read the following. Oh, yes, be it resolved that Town Council accept resignation of Mr. Alain Sommet as coordinator of bylaw enforcement and be it also resolved that Mr. Alain Sommet be reintegrated to its past position as chief building inspector. Yes, I just wanted to add, Mr. Mayor, that this is not a resignation per se. No? Yes, Counselor Zant? Well, again, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not thinking that this is a resignation. We transferred this good gentleman on a temporary basis for four-month period. We transferred him into this new position to see if he could he could do what needed to be done, but he preferred to go back to his previous employment. So I'd like to ask the chief administrative officer to proceed to a selection process to replace this vacant position. Seconded by Counselor Sima, all those in favor, carry then. Let's go on now to item 10.9, Counselor Lallon. Yes, be it resolved that Town Council accepts the hiring of Mr. Richard Dupuis as a night patroller of roadways for a four-month period as of the 28th of February, 2016 and be it resolved that Mr. Dupuis's salary be pegged at Level 1, Class 3, blue-collar sector, in keeping with the salary grid amounts as recommended. Seconded by Counselor Sima, questions or comments? Well, comments, I was taking a look at the organizational chart and this position did not appear quite clearly anywhere. Mrs. Collier, these are two seasonal employees. One seasonal employee has retired with regard to the part-time position. The positions that you have on organizational charts are full-time positions only. So he'd be hired until the month of May, that's right, end of May, 2016. That's right. It's, we'd keep him over the winter time. We had an employee that was doing this work. We had two individuals that were doing this type of work, two individuals. How about the work hours of these individuals? These were nighttime positions, starting at 10:00 PM until 6:00 AM. From 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. I see, from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, that's right. Yeah, they were overseeing the maintenance of roadways, making use of the city's plough. Well, this is something that we do, this has been a longstanding procedure, longstanding practice, I haven't seen, I haven't, I don't recall though, having come across that last year. Well, he's a part-time operator, basically, he's a part-time operator. You know, that gives rise to a seasonal change. We're already involved in changes right now, there's someone that's sick right now, off on sick leave? We had a report seeking for four seasonal workers. One of our operators, one of our full-time operators went on sick leave, so one seasonal worker was is now doing this job, seconded then by Mrs. Sima, that's fine. Let's go on now to accounts paid. Be it resolved for the accounts paid in between the 16th of January, 2016 to the February 2nd, 2016, in the amount of $2,395,184.86 be adopted as recommended. Seconded by Counselor Chouagnier, any questions? Counselor Grimah? Just for purposes of clarification, maybe I should switch to English here. I see that snow removal amounts start to be taken in December, i.e. this year. It didn't snow until towards the end of December, so I assume that we don't pay as they come. We have a fixed amount and we pay them every month? How does it work for the execution? Because I saw big amounts in December, we didn't get any snow until the December 28th, yeah. And I saw very big amounts being paid out, sometimes several thousand dollars, you know. Do we have a contract with them? Then we divide every month and we give a fixed amount to them? Or are they paid as they come? Well, it depends, if we're talking about materials, we might find materials. No, I'm talking about snow removal. The snow removal contract itself, that's correct. Which one are you referring to? If you look at all the items, it says December 15th and they charge us an amount, you see? And it didn't snow until December 28th. Well, if you remember, Mr. Jisly Lallon or whatever, he's a greater operator, we pay him every month. No, 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 removal from the parking lots and the City of Rockland and other parking lots, that involves a different contractor. Well, Mr. Boucher, you see, we only rent equipment. If we need additional truck, most of our, well, I'm talking about snow removal companies that come and work the parking lot at City Hall and then the fire station. Contracts with Mr. Boucher, how do the contracts work? Do we pay them a fixed amount each and every month? No, we pay them every time they go out. Well, I think we should take a look, because we had very little snow in December. Yes, yes, but if it's freezing rain, it's worse than snow. If we got rain and it was very slippery, they had to go out and salt. So it's in the same contract, but every time that they come, we pay, we don't have a fixed amount. That's right, for snow, it's after every five centimeters or close to, and for freezing rain? Well, it's automatic. Okay, I just saw large amounts, I just wanted to clarify those. I have another question. The first one deals with page 23 of the Finch Financial Report. St. Joseph Street Extension to December 31st. Are those, is this work that was performed in anticipation of the public meeting that we're going to host and consultation process will be involved in? I just want to make sure that I understand what you're getting at, Counselor Lallon. Page 23, St. Joseph Extension, there's a cost of $27,398. WSP Canada Inc. Yes, we've retained a consultant firm to undertake the environmental assessment design for the St. Joseph Boulevard Extension. Is this in preparation for the consulting work that we're involved in? Yes. Well, when you're saying consultation? Yes, yes, there will be an open house and it's all part of that process. But they are expending money as part of the environmental process, the design and whatnot. And I think we've committed to council, that we're going to try and fast-track this, we're in a position to go to tender as fast as possible. I actually have the invoice here for you, okay? And what's included in that invoice is project management, identification of problems and opportunities. This is the biggest amount, the invoice, $17,000 were spent on looking at the problems that inherent to the plans and then there were identifications of problem areas. And, but there's work being done at the present time, yes, yes. We're not waiting until the public hearing for work to be done, that's right. Second one, Mr. Mayor, is page 28, 134 of our document is Patent Engineer for Traffic Control on Edward and Laurier, $24,000. I believe that that was with regards to the change brought to the light fixture box. We know that we had a problem with the traffic control signal. We changed the box just before Christmas, so that we didn't have that problem anymore. Okay. My next one, which is probably the last one, it's page 17, 130, or 123, in the documents. It's a norma excavation shovel rental for Laurier. Private property repair. Was this done during the construction of the sewer on Laurier? This is our favorite project. This project was to perform the tree removal. Oh, so that's what it is, well, thank you then, that's fine. That answers my question, that's fine. That's fine. We have the reports. Questions then? No questions, no question. Anything else? Any other questions? Yes? Yes? Good evening, Mr. Lavard, how are you? There's, let's take a look at page 13, shall we? Tire replacement? Tires on the squad truck that needed to be replaced. And then we have another service of the outway, service de pneu, la voie outwaye. Where's that company from? That's from Alfred, actually. Okay. Is there any reason why we're using somebody from Alfred and not from around here? Well, I don't know specifically, but I imagine it's more of a timing issue than anything else, so. I believe it's just a small reserve, $51. Dollars or, well, they have the equipment, don't forget. So, when they come with the pickup truck, they put down the calcium, they fix the patch and... On page 22 also, page 22, I see that we've used Tolman Truck Center and Transit Truck Mobile Services. Are these companies from Ottawa or from here? I believe there's one that's local. The trans companies local, I believe, I'd have to come back to you on this. And there's another one that we use regularly also. Mr. Mayor, I'll remind council that whenever when we're involved in any amount, we're always trying to whenever when we're involved in any amount, we're always trying to get three tenders, well, three people to tender, the best price will get our vote. That's all. And the Optimist Center also, that's on page 45. Protection for tech services and repairs and all of that. These are for, actually for shows, for shows, right, that have been going on. Do we get paid back for all of this stuff? Well, it depends on who does it, you know, if it's part of our buildings. Tech services for shows, shows pay us and then we pay them back or, they're nonprofit, are they not, Mr. Boucher? They're nonprofit? The Optimists Performance Hall, tech services, well, tech services involved in production, you know, their build with regards to the show, well, we're not the ones paying for that, the, the one that entered into a lease is paying for this. When we're repairing the equipment, the city of Clarence and Rockland pays for this. Well, it says tech surface showcase and these are not repairs. And tech services for the dance, well, what we do is that we charge for the service and ME Production supplies them services and we pay and we're being repaid. So it's like an in-and-out type thing, more or less. Page 46, 47, J.L. Richards, two entries, $5,121 and bylaw reviews, $3,627. How does that impact zoning and planning? Well, we have a separate contract with J.L. Richards for the zoning bylaw for this capital project and we've hired their services to rewrite the zoning bylaw. And it just happens to be the same gentleman that's providing services to us through J.L. Richards. We did get pricing and they assist us because our planning proposition right now is vacant. So when we need additional planning advice, they've been helping us and they fill in a couple of days of week. So that's a separate contract that's invoiced. All right, let's find then. All right? Okay, well, thank you very much then. You're welcome. Any other questions? Seconded by Councilor Lalonde. That's fine. All those in favor? Thank you. Yes. Request for proposals for project management, whereas the Infrastructure and Planning Department have received responses to our request for proposal for project management services were a portion of the approved 2016 Capital Works Program and whereas the RMP comprises three services, category B, drainage and underground services, and whereas the staff is evaluating the submissions received and recognizes that the firm, LHBM Project Managers Incorporated, be awarded the contract to provide project management services for the three services category. Be it resolved that the Committee of the Hall, be it resolved that council award, award the contract to provide project management services to the firm of HPM Project Managers Incorporated for the three service category for the following limits. Category for roads and bridges, $93,895. Category two, drainage, $66,798. And category three, underground services, $128,690. All right. I believe we skipped over a tiny paragraph at the very, very end there, Mrs. Simone. Or did we? Do you want me to be resolved that Town Council adopt Resolution 2016-07 being a bylaw to make use of town funds to finance this particular contract? Seconded by Councilor Grimaud, any questions? All those in favor? Thank you then. Make it happen now. Let's make it happen. Be it resolved that Town Council adopt bylaw 2016-14 being a bylaw awarding this particular contract to the HPM, to HPM Consultants. Provincial, or should I say, bylaws, 12.1, 12.2, 12.3, 12.4 bylaws. Do any of you wish to withdraw any bylaws? I need someone to second. Seconded by Councilor Sima. All those in favor approving those bylaws? Thank you. Let's go on now to the last bylaw, confirmatory bylaw. Mrs. Sima moved and Councilor Grimaud seconded them. Someone to propose that the confirmatory bylaw be adopted? Fine, fine. All right, I tried to get away from my, from this of having the confirmatory bylaw confirmed. What can I say? Well, well, but we have to adopt those bylaws, Mr. Mayor. We have to adopt those bylaws. 12.2, Application to amend the official plan of the urban area of the city of Clarence and Rockland, technical amendment to legal non-conforming uses policies and residential infill densities. These are the bylaws. 2016-13, to dedicate a part of De Violet and De Jocan-Jonquet Street as a public highway. 12.4, 2016-15, bylaw to provide water and sewer fees and charges. And 216-04, appointment of officials and acting officials for the consent granting authority and for the signing of plans of subdivision. Seconded by Mrs. Sima. All those in favor, carry. Those are the bylaws that were confirmed tonight. Please, if I could have someone to read the confirmatory bylaw. Councilor Belair, be it resolved that Town Council of the city of Clarence and Rockland adopt bylaw 2016-16 being the confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of Town Council that was held on the 16th of February. Seconded by Councilor Simone. All those in favor, carry then. Well, thank you. Adjournment called at 7:58 PM. Fine, we're all in agreement with that, are we? 7:58 PM? That's fine. That's fine. All right, so we'll take a few minutes pause or break and we'll come back for the next meeting, the Committee of the Hall. Thank you very much, folks.